We have a quorum now at this point. Let's go ahead at this point and get started. Good afternoon, everybody. We have several, a couple of items on prior to our roll call. Let's be sure. Are we ready to record, Michelle?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Yes, we're ready to record.
All right, thank you. With that, it will call to order the meeting on January 6, 2021. We're so good to, glad to say 2021. And I doubt anybody's making a mistake of writing 2020 on anything at this year. With that, call to order. Let's have a roll call if you would, please.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Coan. Commissioner Banton.
Present.
Commissioner Boas.
Present.
Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Long.
Present.
Commissioner Peoples.
Present.
Commissioner Goodman.
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Present.
President. Thank you very much. With that, we do have a quorum today. So everybody knows Cecilia is operating from home. Don is operating from his office. Alexa and Dale are both in the office and Michelle is in the office at this point. Let me first just simply say happy new to year to each of you here. I pray not only that you had a safe holiday, but your family had a safe holiday. And if anybody has had to grieve because of lost or empty seats in your table, my support and prayers are with you in this season. As we know, chaos and calamity is happening in DC, but I appreciate the fact that we understand the quorum and quorum here. With that, the first action of business would be the approval of the minutes. Hopefully, all the commissioners received their packet last week that had that. I would entertain a motion for the minute approval. I move for approval of the minutes dated December the 2nd, 2020.
Second, Commissioner.
I had a, who was, I heard second by.
Commissioner Long and Goodman.
Thank, thank you. So we had a motion approved by Commissioner Boyd and Commissioner Second. With that, a roll call, vote please.
Can you hear me from here? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Commissioner Boyd.
Commissioner Boyd, Boyd voted aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Long.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Aye.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Aye.
Judge Strager.
Aye.
And the motion passes without further ado.
Very good. Thank you very much for that. With that, we have no rezoning items today, but we do have seven, I believe, seven items to be presented. Alexa will be presenting the first two items together. We'll, we'll vote them independently, but she'll, go ahead because they are very closely related at this point. If you're on the phone or on call, please be sure you're muted. At the time of questions, I'll, as the commissioner knows, I'll call you by name and we'll walk through that. With that, Alexa, it's all yours for the item number 86-20.
Awesome. So as Commissioner Strager has stated, I am combining or consolidating the first two resolutions for, on your agenda map, that is the numbers 86 and 89. And as you can see, I've consolidated them because they have the same proposed developer, which is Tabernacle CDC. And hopefully, on the call, can't see who's on it, we have Representative Pastor Andre Alexander with Tabernacle CDC. And we also have Joe Glasscock and Doug Rasmussen of Steadfast City will be able to answer any questions after the comment section. Okay. So just to kind of go back to the other slide, the first two, the first area that is south of Fairgrounds Park comprises of 105.9 acres and is located in a just abandoned neighborhood. The prospective developer plans to redevelop the area in multiple phases. In the first phase, they will renovate four vacant homes and construct five new single-family homes. In the second phase, they will construct 10 new homes. And in the third phase, construct another 12. In the second area covering 69.4 acres, and that is in the Old Town and Fairgrounds neighborhood north of Fairgrounds Park, the prospective developer plans to renovate 20 vacant homes and construct 10 new homes each year until 60 homes are completed. Next slide. And also the next slide, as you can see, in both of these areas, there are multiple designation. And then we'll go to the next slide. Okay. So I wanted to talk about the first area, which is located south of Fairgrounds Park, which is Natural Bridge, North Grant, St. Louis, and North Vandivader Ave. There are two major developments that are occurring in this area. The first one is the Brickline Greenway, which is meant to connect the major parks in a central loop in the middle of St. Louis. One of the proposed segments is located on North Land and will lead into Fairgrounds Park, hence bordering the eastern boundary of the redevelopment area. Next, we also have the Herbert Hoover Boys and Girls Club's youth golf facility, which you can see on the slide is at the bottom right-hand corner. And this is, the youth golf facility is located at the former Carter Carburetor site, which was deemed a super fun site. Construction of this facility is anticipated to be complete by fall of 2021 or spring of 2020. And the reason why I'm also bringing this two major developments up is that we, staff does recommend that the Section B.6 circulation of the redevelopment plan be amended to include this information and to ensure developers are aware of this plan moving forward, thus coordinating efforts rather than competing interests. We'll go to the next slide. As you can see, this is the area north of Fairgrounds Park. And through analysis of, through GNS, GIS analysis, I was able to find that there were approximately 318 vacant lots and buildings in this area and 211 that are owned by LRA. And also, if you see the houses, those are kind of like drawings of the proposed housing type for those areas. Next slide. Okay. So Natural Bridge, Natural Bridge Avenue, North Grand Boulevard, the St. Louis Ave, North Vandivader Ave, the redevelopment areas hereby recommended to be amended to include plan information regarding the development of the Brickline Greenway to ensure coordination. PDA staff recommends the area to be blighted under Missouri statute, Chapter 99. Staff also finds that the proposed blighting study and redevelopment plan is in conformity with the strategic land use multiple designations, as you can see, that are listed on this slide. And PDA staff recommends approval of the proposed blighting study and redevelopment plan. If you have any questions, we have her to answer them. And we also have Pastor Alexander, we have Joel and Doug Rasmussen on the line to also assist with any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Alexa. With that, Don, do you have anything you want to say? I'm going to ask Pastor Alexander in a moment to speak, but I'll let Don, if he has any input on this.
You're muted, so that might be our good, our blessing.
You're muted, Don. That's our blip.
I was about to do that because you know I like to talk, but really what I wanted to say is give an introduction to these two redevelopment areas are just really similar in that the Fairgrounds Park is in between. Pastor Alexander, we'll talk about all this was excitement. We're excited, excited he's so committed to this area. And I just want to give a few reminders and would appreciate if Pastor Alexander mentions the hub business activity that's going on in this area and sort of the excitement, the momentum and passion they have for this geography. So that's really what I wanted, wanted to do. And then I'd like to make one comment to Dale at the end, if I go ahead.
We, we've also, Pastor Alexander, if you would, if you want to introduce yourself and give us a thought on this. And I believe your order woman was on. Did I? Okay, Pastor, I'm going to go ahead, please.
Okay. Thank you, first of all, everybody who is on the Zoom call this evening. As mentioned, I'm Pastor Andre, pastor of the Tabernacle Church and president of Tabernacle Community Development Corporation. And as stated, we really are excited about this work and particularly this area. This area is a, near and dear to the heart, not only of our church, but to me and my wife personally, growing up in this area, as well as still having family that live in the area. The concept centers around leveraging partnerships and the existing synergy that is already happening, as highlighted in the plan with the Boys and Girls Club and PGA Reach. We have great relationships there, especially with PGA Reach and have been in the loop on what is transforming that corner as we've thought about our plans and how we can complement it as well as the Brickline. And the ideal is to build out homes in phases and increase the build out as the demand increases. And we see that, we, we see demand already, but we believe once, like anything, the dirt begins to move and things are actually built, it will happen. Now, prior to this new, the new construction of homes in both areas, leveraging the park as a, a beautiful asset to lure families back to the city, as well as some that are already in the city that are renters, that are looking to become homeowners in the area. We already partake in rehabbing homes. We've been taking vacant properties before there was the Vacancy Collaborative. To date, we've rehabbed 10 homes, two singles, eight multifamily units. We currently have three multifamily units that are under construction. Last year, in the midst of the pandemic, we've bought five multifamily buildings, two of them which are like 12-unit facilities right here in the area, to create affordable housing and help people with life skills to become stable so that they can be self-sufficient and thrive. And so now with doing that, and we'll continue that work, by the way, but, and in addition to that, the new housing construction will complement what's already happening for us as an organization. And in the middle of all of this, as Don mentioned, we are coming down to the tail end of finishing what we call the hub. It is the old Farragut Elementary Branch School Building. It's 15,000 square feet. It will serve as a community resource center in the area. And inside of it will be housed a few key initiatives, one of them being a family medicine, urgent care slash clinic and women's health center that is being built out, led and ran by Mercy through a partnership we have with them. Castle Charities also will be bringing up Pathways to Progress program and utilizing office space in the hub. Our church will be there and a relationship with Glenn Turner and 1904 Labs, building out a technology space to teach Raspberry, computer programming, Java, C++, and web and app building so that youth, by the time they leave high school, can enter into the geospatial workplace, trained and ready and able to secure high-paying jobs. And so all of that will be taking place in the hub, which again is Community Resource Center. It's a $1.2 million investment and it will be opening this spring. The hardcore construction pieces, though, will be done by the end of January. And then we've got two months for Mercy to build out their clinic on the inside of. So we believe everything we're engaging currently will enhance the area and be accessible to all, not just a few. And I'm going to, again, just thank you for the opportunity to present this in the hope that guys give us a yes.
Very good. Thank you very much. We definitely will encourage any development with that. Is Alderman Bosley on? Or I didn't see a letter of support. Was I missing that in the packet? Alexa, was there a letter of support from?
No.
Okay.
I can comment. This is Joel Glasscock with Steadfast City. We've been working with, with Andre Alexander and are representing him with, with these proposed redevelopment areas. With Alderman Bosley, we do not have an actual physical letter, but he has communicated his support and also recommended that the board bill be read on January 8th for both redevelopment areas that are on agenda tonight.
Thank you, Joel. With, with that, as the commissioner know, I'll, I'll go through the roll to give everybody an opportunity for questions, beginning with Alderman Boyd, and then we'll go to Commissioner Banton. Alderman Boyd?
Thank you. I really don't have any questions, but I would like to compliment the pastor and all the great work that he and his team is doing in that community. The Chapter 99 and the way we're doing it is, you know, the best way to use this tool that we have to spread development in our community. So I just want to salute you and say congratulations and keep up the good work.
Thanks, Jeffrey. It's been a long time. I appreciate you.
Wouldn't welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Banton.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you for the presentation. And it sounds like a very exciting project. Couple of questions. Pastor, when you were, you're speaking about the project, you made it sound like this was going to be done in phases. So are all these new builds, as well as the renovations, do you plan on doing those? Are those actually all planned to be started at once? Or is there a phasing plan for, for all of that?
Great question. Yes, there is a phasing plan for all of that, that carries out over actually the next five years. So the first leg of the phase starts with 3,700 block of Hebert. And reason being, one, we have LRA option rights there currently that we're in the process of closing on. And also, it's in close proximity to the other rehab work we've been doing. So the momentum is fit to start there. And that starts there with 15 new constructed homes affordable for sale. And alongside of that phase, we are looking at five additional existing properties that are on Sullivan and Greer to rehab alongside of this. So each phase, there's a total of one, two, three, like five phases of this. And each phase calls for anywhere between 10 to 15 new homes and five to seven rehabs along the way. And those are managed by two separate construction companies, if that makes sense. So we have one construction company dedicated to the rehab process because they know it well. And we oversee that. And that's something we've been doing already. And then we have two different minority-owned contractors we're looking at for the build of the new homes.
Right. And is there going to be any replating of the lots? Or are you using the existing plating? Or like combining any lots or anything of that?
The way we haven't laid out right now is using the existing plating. Again, we were trying to, we're trying to keep the process as cost-effective and as simple as possible. So what we currently have on paper is using what's existing.
Very good. And last question about the homes themselves. Obviously, the renovations are great for the, the new builds. What, what are you planning, the sort of square footage to be compared to what's existing there now, as well as materials planning on, on using?
Great question. So on the new builds, we're looking at an average square footage of anywhere between 1400 to 1600 square foot, typically three bedroom, two bath, looking at all high-efficiency appliances and equipment such as for the heating and cooling, hot water tanks, et cetera. And then in terms of the, like, the compotes, the lumber, et cetera, looking at using standard lumber. But one of the things that's coming into discussion now is, which we've done on some of our rehabs in the past, is utilizing existing lumber from, you know, previous homes. So what I mean is, there's been some homes that we've bought that, that couldn't be refurnished and put back in play, but the lumber, the bricks, things like that were in great shape. So we store it because we're trying to keep down from filling up landfills and contribute to making our environment better. So now we're having discussions about what does it look like if we can bring some of that existing practice out of our rehab policies and operations into the new build.
That's great. That, that sounds like a great use of, of resources because I know lumber prices right now are through the roof.
Yes.
One last question. Who's, who's your architect for the project?
Great question. Architect for the project, we, we have two. So the, the planning phase of the project is, same with Design Alliance, Dave Mastin and his team. And then the housing actual architecture is Mr. O'Brien, who's done a ton of great work in the city. And we love his designs because they complement the existing housing of the city because that's a big deal to us. We don't want what we build to stand out. We want it to complement and blend in with the existing neighborhood.
That's great. The Mastins live one street down from me. I'm very familiar with their work, do good work, so.
Oh, okay. Yep.
Very good. Great project. No further questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
No problem. Thank you.
Commissioner Boas and then following Commissioner Bradley.
No additional questions. Just want to echo the compliments on the work and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bradley, then Commissioner Peoples. I mean, Commissioner Long.
Thank you. Absolutely no questions. I think whatever questions I had have been answered, but just cannot let this go by without saying what a great job this is. And I think this will be a great addition to that neighborhood. And thanks so much for taking the opportunity to add this up. We truly need this type of stuff in St. Louis. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Long, followed by Commissioner Peoples.
Yeah, I just want to thank the good pastor for being here tonight and providing all of this information. Just a few quick questions. Could you tell me a little bit about how you, the vacant homes that you'll be remodeling? Are those vacant homes currently owned by either LRA or somebody else? And sort of how you, how you choose the ones you're going to pick?
Great question. So in those boundaries that we're requesting for the Chapter 99, we've been operating in them for the last three years or so. So anything that becomes vacant in that area, if it's privately owned, we start with our process of initial letter and or discussion if we know the owner to try and acquire privately. We have acquired some vacant properties that we have now put back into play through the LRA process and some of them from a tax sale. So we choose based off location, meaning if it falls in those boundaries, we go after and we go after it aggressively. And we rarely, I think in the work we've done the last three and a half years, we've only, out of all, we've purchased a total of a little bit over 30 homes total. And of those 30, we've only demoed maybe four. And that was just because it was like half a house. So our whole heartbeat is to make whatever's there existing, if the foundation and everything is good, we'll put it back into existence. We even had a house where a part of the roof was missing, but the foundation and the sidewalls were good. And so we rebuilt it. And we work closely with Daniel over in Culture and Resources. He knows us well because of wanting to maintain building integrity.
Well, the more you talk about this, the better it sounds. And then last question maybe for staff or for our, our chairman. Are we approving both of these together or separately?
There'll be two, there'll be two separate votes.
Okay.
Yeah, it will be a press, two separate issues.
Oh, this is great. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it, Pastor.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Peoples, followed by Commissioner Goodman.
No questions. I just want to say I think it's a very good project. I'm excited. Thank you.
Commissioner Goodman, then Commissioner Vaughn.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaughn.
Just commending the project. I think it looks like a first-class development, great investment for a neighborhood that, that could use it. And I want to thank you for that. I don't know if I missed it, but can you just remind me, are any structures being demolished for this project?
Great question. No, they are not. The housing stock that is left in the area is in good shape. The bones are good. So even on the, the vacancies, we've, we in fact reached out to Laura Costello and her team to kind of ask them to pump the brakes. They had a couple on their list that they were actually going to demo. And we said, no, please don't because they are definitely salvageable.
That is, makes it even better. So congratulations and thank you so much for sharing. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vaughn. I will simply say to you, Pastor, and your church, I'm always glad to see that your church is being part of the community and building up the community as opposed to taking from the community. So thank you very much for the work that you're doing and providing housing to those that need it. With that, I'm going to ask Alexa, she has two votes, she has two recommendations for us, and she'll make her, read the first one, we'll make a vote, and then read the second, we'll vote on that one. If you'll remind us of the first request.
So the first request, so both of the, you recommended requests are for the area south of Fairgrounds Park, which is bordered by Natural Bridge, North Grant, St. Louis Ave, and North Vandivader Ave. And so the first thing that I am, well, actually, it's just one for this one, is recommending that there is language. So we are recommending that in the redevelopment plan, Section B.6 and circulation, that it be amended to include information about the Brickline Greenway so that developers are aware of this plan moving forward and thus can coordinate efforts instead of competing, having competing interest. And so if you could go to the previous slide, too. So I will summarize again, just to reiterate, we're doing two separate votes. And this is the area south of Fairgrounds Park. So the Natural Bridge, North Grant, St. Louis Ave, and North Vandivader Ave redevelopment area is hereby recommended to be amended to include plan information regarding the development of the Brickline Greenway to ensure coordination. PDA staff recommends the area to be declared, to be declared blighted under Chapter 99. Staff finds that the proposed blighting study and redevelopment plan, as amended, is in conformity with the strategic land use plan designation. And PDA staff recommends approval of the proposed blighting study and redevelopment plan.
Okay. With that, we are approving the first number, PDA 086-20 RDM. With that, let's call for a vote, please. Entertainer motion. I'm sorry, entertainer motion, except the recommendation.
I move to approve this, this development as proposed.
Second. It was moved by Commissioner Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Boyd. Call for vote, please.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Long.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Aye.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Aye.
Judge Strager.
Aye.
Motion passes without further ado.
Thank you very much. With that passing, the second request is approval of PDA 808920 RDM. And if you would summarize that for us, Alexa, please.
Yep. So PDA staff recommends the area to be declared blighted under Chapter 99. Staff finds that the proposed blighting study and redevelopment plan is in conformity with the designation that are listed on the slide. PDA staff recommends approval of the proposed blighting study and redevelopment plan.
Thank you very much. Again, we are approving two of the, two different items on the same area which were presented. I will entertain a motion for disapproval.
Go move.
Second, previous roll. It was moved by, just a moment, it was moved by Commissioner Bradley, seconded by Alderman Boyd. With that, I heard a call for previous roll. Any objections? Hearing no approve, no objections to previous roll. 8920 is approved also. So we, again, congratulate the Tabernacle and their work that they're doing. Thank you very much. And- Hearing no approve, no objections to previous role, uh, eight nine two zero is approved also. So we, again, congratulate the Tabernacle and their work that they're doing. Thank you very much. And, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rowan, you had something you wanted to?
Just, just want to add here at the, at the end, uh, is the, the great news, the word blight, if we had used it, uh, you know, a year or two ago, it would have been about a superfund site, uh, being in part of this geography where the, where the golf, the youth golf facilities go. And so, uh, congratulations to the whole city team, uh, SLDC, the EPA. Uh, and Jake knows that the mayor hosted just a few months ago, uh, quite the ceremony on the site with folks from Washington, uh, declaring the, the, the remediation having occurred, and so this, this use can go on. Uh, another thing I'll just sort of mention, uh, is, uh, for those on the planning commission that were interviewing the pastor, pretty rigorously about design issues, uh, earlier in his life, he went to school to be a civil engineer, so, you know. A little, little nod up to that. And Pastor, not seen, but, uh, participating in this is Scott Ogilvy, who's been in contact with you to help you with, with some of the
Yeah.
structure issues. So that's, that's, uh, he should be helpful. And the last is for Dale. Uh, Dale, we love it when you fill out the, uh, sustainability, um, matrix on these. And these both, of course, have items checked. And I would just note, uh, that there is one that says, "Make LRA land available at no cost for smart, productive, creative reuse of the land." That has a checkmark in it as being applicable, so, uh, just so you know.
Yes, I, I recognize that.
Good. All right. Thank you all.
Well, thank you. And Pastor, I'm glad you did not mention your background because we probably would have had another thirty questions from two hundred and three people. That was very wide, and then we would have had a territorial conversation with that. With that, we have, so thank you again. Congratulations to you. We'll move forward to the Board of Aldermen at this point. Uh, I think was mentioned it would be read on the eighth. I think you'd say it earlier, so we look forward to that. With that, PDA zero nine two RDM, uh, Alexa will be presenting that one next.
Yep. So now we're moving into the downtown area. So the next redevelopment area is three hundred to three thirty-eight North Fourth Street, which encompasses approximately two point three nine acres in the downtown neighborhood. The purpose of this redevelopment plan is to renovate an existing mixed-use building with four hundred and fifteen apartments and ground floor commercial space. The prospective developer is Value St. Louis Properties. I'll go to the next slide. So the area is located in a specialty mixed-use area. Um, if you can recall, the planning commission recently adopted a design downtown STL neighborhood plan on December second of twenty twenty, so that was just last month. The plan has multiple goals and recommendations to support the goal to make downtown an energetic, inclusive, and bustling community that reflects a mix of cutting-edge thinking and bold design. One of the recommendations are to update the zoning to include some form-based measures. These include active street frontages, regulation of street development such as curb cuts, urban setbacks, and active street frontages, and eliminating non-accessory parking lots. And if you look at the slide, you'll see that, um, that kind of like navy blue circle, that's where the redevelopment area is located. So Fourth Street is a proposed, um, active-frontage street. So in, in this situation, we want to just make sure that in the event that the developer doesn't, this specific developer doesn't go according to the plan, that at least in the redevelopment plan, we have, um, recommendations. I'm gonna read that off to you. So we recommend that the redevelopment plan, section, um, section seven, building and site regulations, eight urban designs, and nine parking regulations includes some standards to meet this recommendation. And you could go to the next slide. So as you can see, it's a specialty mixed-use area. Next slide. And just to kind of give you some context, um, the photos that have an outline in red, that is the building, so the mansion house complex. And then to the north of it, which is attached, is the mansion house center. And then also along Fourth Street to the west is a mixed-use building. We also have northwest of the mansion house complex is the Federal Reserve Bank. And then also south of this area is City Place Apartments. Okay. So just to summarize, we find that three hundred to three thirty-eight North Fourth Street redevelopment area is hereby recommended to be amended to require an active street frontage along Fourth Streets. Staff recommends the proposed blighting study and redevelopment plan for the area with amended is hereby to be declared as blighted. Staff also finds that the request of the recommended amendments to be in conformity with the city's sweep and the design downtown STL neighborhood plan, and PDA staff recommends approval of proposed blighting study and redevelopment plan as amended. I will be happy to answer any questions. Hopefully on the line, I have David Swinney of Lewis Rice and Brian Kraft of The Last Commercial Real Estate, who can also answer any additional questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, with that, as I said, it does sound familiar to many of us because of our conversation with this in December. Uh, with that, I think our questions may be simply limited, so, I mean, simple. So I'll go through the role of, of committee, of commissioners, and we'll come back for any other feeling. Both those representatives, if there's an answer, or you feel the need to answer, desire to answer, please go forward. Uh, Commissioner Boyd, any questions?
Sure. Uh, maybe I have a brain cramp. I don't remember this in December, so forgive me. Um, but the mansion house is occupied right now. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, occupied.
And what percentage, excuse me, what percentage of the building is occupied?
I'm going to refer to the developer on this one, the those on the line.
Okay, Dave Swinney, you are muted as well as Brian. Brian is unmuted now.
Brian, I'm with Val's Commercial Real Estate. I'm a consultant to the owner, developer, value, um, properties. Uh, there's two, two components. There's the, uh, multifamily, and occupancy is currently below eighty percent. Um, it does fluctuate. It has continued to decline over the past year. Um, and then there is about seventy-five thousand square feet of commercial space, both under the, uh, apartment building tower and then the mansion house center, which was in the prior slide. The commercial space is at ten percent occupancy, so it's, uh, nearly ninety, ninety percent vacant as it relates to the, uh, commercial space.
And are we blighting the entire building, both residential and commercial?
So I have looked at the three hundred to three thirty-eight, which according to the map, it includes the commercial space.
Okay. I'm, so is there an intent to rehab, um, do a total renovation of all the apartments? Is that part of the development plan?
Yes, the, the quick summary of the development plan is a fourteen million dollar or more, uh, investment with the primary, um, allocation of those funds to replace the existing heating system in the building, which is functionally obsolete, more or less. It was, uh, you know, the building's over fifty years old. It's on a central plant. Unfortunately, the lease rates and the occupancy levels of the building, um, have been below market for some time. Uh, this ownership group's owned the property for over twenty-plus years, and has reinvested as they can, but the current HVAC system makes the building more or less, you know, incompatible and, um, substandard to market conditions in downtown. They will be doing cosmetic upgrades to the units as well, but that's, uh, um, a smaller segment of the investment. The primary investment would be the HVAC replacement. There's also some replacement that'll be done to the parking structure underneath mansion house, as well as the towers to the north and the south. If you've been in that garage, it's difficult to determine which, uh, property line in that garage because it's contiguous. Um, those upgrades need to happen. That garage has been in a state of some disrepair for a while. And there is some coordination among the two, the three property owners. Uh, and then there will be, uh, a reserve set aside for tenant improvements for the commercial space as a part of this refinance and reinvestment, uh, in the building. And that will allow the current owner to be more aggressive to lease up the, uh, commercial space from a repositioning and market standpoint.
Okay, I'm not gonna try to be mean-spirited, but if, if the owner has owned this for over twenty years, it doesn't sound like the owner has put much of an investment in this property. If, if, if they're gonna upgrade the HVAC system, how would that change the value of the building? I mean, that's maintenance. Uh, I'm a, I'm a property owner. I changed furnaces and both the furnace and air conditioning system out. Uh, I've had, um, developers redo apartment, redid one apartment in, in, in my neighborhood, changed out the windows and did other stuff. It didn't really add any value. It was just some maintenance that they should have done anyway. Uh, so, uh, tax abatement was moot. So if we're just changing out, what's the purpose of, of, of needing tax abatement? And philosophically, I'm, I'm gonna direct this to Dale. How do you blight something that's eighty percent occupied? That just makes no sense to me. Um, that's, I'm not connecting with that. How's that potential, how's that possibly blighted in this eighty percent occupied? And clearly, I understand if someone wants to go on and make this big renovation and create luxury apartments. But, and I didn't hear that being said, Brian, so I'm not saying you said that. You know, what I heard was that we're gonna go in and change the HVAC system and the commercial, and it's, and we're at eighty percent occupancy, and ten percent on commercial, and I'm guessing just nothing has been done with the commercial space for a while to be at ten percent is my guess. And I probably could be more inclined to understand wanting to do a major renovation, and maybe that's a blighted space, you know, because it only has ten percent occupancy, but seriously, why are we blighting a building that's eighty percent occupied?
Uh, the existing HVAC system is more or less function obsolete. There's no independent controls in any of the units for tenants to control their own heat or air conditioning. And the system itself has more or less reached the end of its life cycle. Because of some of the economic conditions in downtown, the cash flow for the building is virtually in the red or barely above the red. Um, so the tax abatement will allow for the refinance of the owner is gonna be using a HUD loan, and the tax abatement will allow them to get a larger loan in order to do some of these improvements. The, um, the new HVAC system will also result in significant energy savings, which will help the cash flow position of the property and allow the owner to continue to reinvest in the commercial space, as well as do other enhancements to the units, which will allow them to increase rents slightly. Uh, this is in no way, uh, a luxury, uh, apartment building in the sense of what we've seen from some of the new construction. But this is not a, you know, this is a, you know, an affordable option for downtown residents um, in a prominent location in the city. From a commercial standpoint, uh, it's difficult to attract tenants if you don't have the, uh, cash flow and capital reserves to offer tenant improvement enhancements as a part of your lease offerings, and that's what they've really struggled with. So this will refresh the capital reserves associated with that.
Uh, Brian, if, if they're, if they're just doing maintenance.
I do.
I mean, I, I, are, are they coming in and actually totally renovating apartments and transforming them into something nice? I mean, when I think of apartments downtown, I do think of a luxury, and I just kind of threw that out, and I said, I didn't hear you say that. But I would, I would think that i- if you're gonna do a big, major renovation downtown in a place like the mansion house, you would want to transform it to more luxury-style apartments and, and create higher rents. And so I could see a great need for tax abatement in, in that space, although I would disagree that it's blighted because it's eighty percent occupied. But, uh, it just.
They are, sorry.
So walk me through it again.
Yep.
What are we doing to the units? What, what are we doing to the actual units?
Okay, so each unit as a part of the HVAC upgrade will get a new system that can be controlled, climate controlled for each unit, which is, I think for most people looking to rent a near-luxury or luxury apartment, a almost necessity that you can control your own heat and AC to be competitive with other properties.
I agree.
Current residents can't do that. Um, so this, this will allow for that functional improvement from a consumer standpoint.
Mm-hmm.
Secondly, there will be updates and replacements to cabinets, countertops, flooring in both the kitchen areas and the bathrooms, um, to bring them up to a more aesthetically, um, contemporary look and feel. There will be other some investments, but those are the major components in each. David, let me know if I've missed or overlooked anything.
No, the, the parking situation will be upgraded as well. Um, also, within this complex, mansion house has been around for fifty-plus years. It's, it's, it's one of the few places that has, um, apartments that are already, uh, what's, I'm totally blank on the word, furnished. So it's often a first place where people move to St. Louis and, and have a flavor for what St. Louis is. That area i- is not doing well. Um, I don't think it's this, this, this franchise of Lou Tallarini and the ownership group. I, I don't. Um, the apart, the hotel directly to the south that was at Crown Plaza Alderman is now vacant and going under bankruptcy. Um, the entire area, um, is pretty depressed right now. So they're, they're committed to staying downtown and to try to keep things going.
Yeah, I, I guess I would understand the term maintenance. I mean, maintenance in my mind is not a full-scale replacement of a fifty-year-old boiler system that, um, doesn't meet the current needs of the building or consumer expectations for renters. Uh, and also is a, you know, an energy hog in terms of their ability to financially reinvest in the building long-term. So I think a way to look at this is a reset of the building, uh, from a cash flow perspective, a financing perspective, and the offering that they can be competitive in the downtown landscape.
And one thing else, if I may, Alderman, if I may add, Mr. Chairman, is this is a, a very important building to the downtown skyline. And we've got many buildings that are sitting vacant right now. Um, as, as we all know, at the Millennium Hotel, who, who continues to sit empty, AT&T, Railway Exchange, a handful. And we have an owner here that, that is committed to downtown into the region and wants to improve his property.
Um, I still say, and I stand on the fact that if you're replacing a heating system, that's maintenance. And, and it's old. Obviously, I'm hearing it's old. It's maybe it's fifty years old. I understand that people can't regulate because I, I think, Dave, what you wanted to say is, um, is they're not furnished apartments, but they
No.
they don't pay for heating and cooling, right?
No, some are, are actually furnished, Alderman, with furniture.
Oh, you do get the furniture and everything. Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was, yeah.
But they also don't pay, do, they don't pay for heating and cooling, do they?
Well, it's probably, I don't think you can because it's not regulated unit to unit.
Right, right.
So it's a flat rate, and, I mean, this is a significant investment in a significant building.
Yeah, and, and certainly fourteen million dollars is a significant investment. I, I'm not comfortable with it being blighted. I, I disagree that it's blighted. I'm not trying to be mean. I'm trying to be practical. But I'm not gonna obstruct, you know, moving this forward. I'm going to abstain on voting. I, in good conscience, I can't vote on this because you're telling me an eighty, a building that's eighty percent occupied is blighted. That makes no sense to me. That's just my opinion, and I'm only one commissioner, and I'm not trying to stop anything. But practically, and I've been on Huts for seventeen years, I've, I've been around for long enough to understand what's what. And that's not working for me. So thank you. I'm done. I take, I've taken up enough time.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyd. Uh, I'm gonna ask that if your mic is open, please go ahead and mute yourself if you're not answering at this time. Uh, Commissioner Manson, you, any questions?
Yes, thank you, uh, Chair Strather. Um, ooh, mansion house, not my favorite, uh, downtown complex by far. Definitely needs a lot of work.
You went mute, Commissioner Manson.
Oh, thank you, sorry. So, um, thank you for your time. Couple of questions for you. Mansion House needs, needs a ton of work, um, in my opinion. Not my favorite complex downtown. My, I actually have a, or used to have a friend who lived there and actually stopped living there because of some of the HVAC issues with the property. It's my understanding that it's a two, two-pipe system, which means that as soon as they turn the heat on, you're stuck with heat for the rest of the time until they, uh, even if you have a, a hot day or something like that. Is that correct? Yeah. Um, I mean, it, is there any part of, uh, this work that would include improvements to sort of the out, outdoor public landscape like that plaza? I mean, it, is there any part of this work that would include improvements to sort of the out, outdoor public landscape like that plaza out front along Fourth Street?
Yes, um, there is, and and it really incorporate, I mean, a- as you know, Commissioner and and everybody on here that walks around that, it's very isolated and on an island. So there are plans to open it up and to make it more inviting, both commercially and to to the residents.
Yeah, I I mean, I I share can, uh, the Alderman's concerns about blighting, um, you know, a property that that, you know, isn't totally defunct, but at the same time, I recognize the fact that if something isn't done and soon, then that property is gonna continue, continue to spiral downwards. So um, and and I recognize that in in HVAC replacement for, you know, two towers and a commercial space of of a complex this side is an expensive proposition. Um, so, um, yeah, I guess, I guess no further questions. I I uh, I would hope that there's some, some public realm improvement um, for downtown as part of this. And uh, interested in seeing it move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banton. Commissioner Boyes.
I I do tend to agree with Alderman Boyd on just the general issues of this project. I happen to live in a one-pipe building um, and actually own a unit here. Um, and I'm also troubled by the idea of seventy-five percent tax abatement for ten years for what seems as though maintenance improvements and kitchens and baths. Um, I I guess what I would like to ask for just from um, staff is maybe a a work session sometime on how those calculations are done to determine what those incentives should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyes. I see Don's mouth moving, but we're gonna hold it.
I'll make a comment, uh, for some of the older commissioner, uh, excuse me, that was a goof. For some of the commissioners that have been around for a while, we we remember that our primary responsibility is to review the the property, review the redevelopment plan and for the geography in compliance with adopted plans. And also a portion of reviewing that it's blighted. Our purview is not per se about the specifics mathematics of uh, the tax abatement act activity. So I might ask Dale and his staff at some time to come to the planning commission and give a little background about how they do do calculations these days in that regard.
Yeah, fair, fair enough, Don. Um, but I do think that the the blighting is a function, there is a relationship between those two, and I think it would move us to better understand it.
True. And the the I I think at the end, I I give Dale a little chance to prepare at the end of this to to talk a little bit about the blighting report that they prepared on the, on the property. So.
I'm going to take privilege and jump down to Commissioner Vines because I know he is in a moment of 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 moving. Uh, so if you'd hold Commissioner Long, Commissioner Vines.
Hey, oh, thanks so much. Um, uh, thanks for sharing this. I um, I I definitely would would echo the, my colleagues on the commission who have expressed concerns about um, blighting a building with that much occupancy. However, I also um, don't claim to know that much about financing for a project this magnitude. I will say that Mansion House Development is absolutely one of my favorite downtown structures um, and um, buildings. I love the idea of three triplet block towers. It is so awesome mid-century. And I'm, I mean, there's no views like at the Mansion House. Um, and I've had a lot of friends over the years who've lived there. Um, I always have been a little bit disappointed with what seems to appear as deferred maintenance in in um, the Mansion House tower at least, and probably the other ones too. Um, it seems like there's, you know, for a long time, for as long as I can remember, and I've worked downtown, I think since uh, you know, the the early two thousands, and it's always been uh, it seems like it's always been kind of in scrappy, tired condition. So um, I just was curious what major improvements or upgrades have been done in the past ten, fifteen years um, that that demonstrate the owners have um, a, you know, a commitment to keeping this building up and not just asking for as many incentives as possible to do a one-fell swoop kind of once over.
I'll I'll start, and Brian, you can, and jump in if I may, Commissioner. I I mean, I think the fact that they're going through this HUD financing and are looking to reinvest money into it. I mean, that, I think that's a, uh, on that's basic level. Um, you know, that's, to your point, in the last ten years, I personally can't answer to that. I I know I have seen businesses come and go. I mean, the stores, I mean, you know, I mean, there's a left-handed store in there. I mean, it's stuff you can't even make up. Um, and I think there's T, there's a a T-shirt shop there. I mean, who does that, you know? You know, but um, they uh, I I I mean, as you walk there, I mean, it's, it's bad. I mean, I I mean, as far as, I work two blocks from there. Uh, just just as far as density and with the arch improvements, I think everybody's really bullish on an opportunity here. Um, but I I don't think I really answered your question. Um, I think it's just been at a maintenance level for the last ten years, and this is a a significant input, and they want to continue to stay downtown. Which, I mean, a lot, a lot of places, not a lot of people do bluntly.
Yeah, if I, if I could maybe highlight two things, and I want to be clear that the residential tower is, you know, somewhere between seventy-five, eighty percent occupancy. We do have a commercial space of seventy-five thousand square feet that's ten percent occupied. So the vacancy, while it's weighted towards commercial, there is some significant vacancy. With that said, on the, on the multifamily front, maybe I'll use, maybe I'll use an analogy of how this can help the ongoing reset of the building. Um, if you live in a house and you have airy windows, your utility bills are much more expensive um, than you would like them to be, but you can't afford to put the new windows in because your, your cash flow is going into utilities. At some point, you pay down enough of your mortgage that you can actually do a refinance and pull out some equity to make the improvements to the windows. And lo and behold, your utility bills go down, and you're able to use that extra cash flow then to fix up your kitchen and put new carpet in your house. Um, you know, for lack of a better analogy, it is, it is, I think, similar in this case in the, in the sense that the cash flow of the building, the the rent rates that they're able to command because of the existing um, HVAC system, as well as some of the other market variability in downtown, that will be fixed and helped because they'll be able to charge more rent, they'll have better cash flow. And so the long-term maintenance of the facility, the reinvestment in this facility will be more stabilized going forward with the improvements made today. It it is an intervention before the building slips into further um, deferred maintenance and deterioration.
Thank you for for responding. No further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Boy. Commissioner Bradley.
Yeah, so um, just a few things here. So from an engineering perspective, I will definitely agree that replacing an entire HVAC system in a building this size is a major capital expense. It is not a maintenance item. And that's the way we treat it here at the city as well. So with that in mind, you said the magic words that struck a nerve in my mind, and it should in Sweeney's mind as well. And that is, as you said, old boiler. And so as President of the Corporation, and I want to move my map down, looking here, we have a nice, beautiful, uh, energy-efficient, sustainable steam loop system that runs right in front of this building. Now, you're probably not gonna use that in your apartments as you're talking about a two-pipe system. I get that. But you have hot water, which you still need a boiler for, and you still have retail space that you still need uh, heating for. And so I would ask you, and I mean, ask respectfully, that you please consider uh, doing a hybrid system and including the steam loop as part of this HVAC renovation. I think it's great for the city. We have ten buildings on it. Um, there are eighty businesses in the downtown core on this, and certainly uh, that building is not on the loop, but it could be very easily. That's my two cents worth.
Commissioner, I've already had that conversation. So, yeah, you're exactly right, and it's it's a bit, and they they are looking at it.
Great, thank you.
Your, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Long.
Uh, so would, so if the project could end up on the steam loop, would that change anything that we're talking about here tonight?
And I I don't think so. I think we, we, the the way as as Commissioner Bradley talked, talked more about the hot water and then the commercial spaces where it's, the control's not as, and and as far as metering it and stuff. Um, no, I I I think the the cost would still be the same, if not a a little bit higher. But um, that is something that they they have looked at, and I've made them aware of, Commissioner.
Uh, so the proposed tax abatement here, are we talking about after the improvements and the property's been reassessed moving forward? Not of its current value, correct?
Correct. It's, the abatement is only on the incremental uh, value that's created through the project. The ex- expectation is, you know, the the building is valued at, you know, X today. Post-improvements, it's gonna be valued at Y, and the abatement would only apply to the difference between X and Y.
Um, yeah, so I I I feel really torn on this tonight. Um, and I I share a lot of my concerns of my fellow commissioners that have already been discussed. And I really, I I really don't believe the argument that um, because nobody wants to come downtown, this is why we have to do this. Um, and, but I also think it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg thing that we want the building owners who are invested in our community to stay because without them, the problem only gets worse. And so that is a little bit of the cycle that I think uh, we talked about when we approved the downtown plan. Um, but I'm also not hearing strong examples of what sort of investments have been made over the last twenty-five years by the ownership to fend off why we're having this conversation tonight. So.
I'm not a part of the owner. I I will say the HVAC system is not something you would make changes to incrementally. They they have probably done everything they can to reinvest in that system to keep it as long as they have. And they've simply reached the point where a full replacement must occur. I did live in the Mansion House. Uh, also, when I moved back to St. Louis in the late nineties, I'm familiar with the building from my time there. Um, you know, it it certainly needs some reinvestment in common areas in the in the units. Um, so I'm glad to see they're doing that.
Oh, I I agree with you. I had, when I was growing up here, I had a friend who lived there. This was probably ten more years ago, and I parked in the underground parking garage, and I thought it was kind of a disaster back then. And that's been ten years ago. So I I'm sure there are are needs there. Um, I just don't know, I have, I have concerns about the proposal here tonight. So um, they haven't already been brought forth, so I I won't take up any more of your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Long. Commissioner Peoples.
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Goodman.
No question.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let me do ask this of either Brian or David. What is the investment that they're looking at putting in? I see it's currently valued at one-eight. What is the anticipated reinvestment in this building?
Minimum of fourteen million dollars. Correct, Brian?
Okay, and I saw four hundred and fifteen apartments in here.
Correct. And 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 something that a lot of people don't realize, and that that's gonna change, and it's been a difficulty for this, and and some folks on, actually, a lot of folks on this may know, is that this property was uh, previously, or just up to recently, was a land lease. So somebody owned the property itself and not the buildings. Um, that whole swath was one, and so they, they bought that. They were able to purchase that. Um, also similar to that is the um, Ballpark Hilton. They don't own that property where Mike Shannon's is. That's on a land lease as well. So there's parts of downtown that have that, that just make it more unique and a little bit more complicated. Wouldn't you say, Brian?
Okay.
I don't know.
I'm going to, in a moment after the vote, I want to ask Commissioner Bradley a question here. But right now, the recommendation of
Mr. Chairman, before you, before you vote, can I have a follow-up?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna go back to Brian, because Brian's been around real estate a long time. Uh, maybe I've had an epiphany listening to some other um, comments. So if what what Richard Bradley said was that it it's it's more than maintenance. It's more like a big capital. Would the assessor reassess the value of the property because it got this, say, eight-million-dollar boiler system?
I think the anticipated increase in value is, I think, what you're getting at, uh, Alderman, and 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 both the SLDC team's analysis and our analysis, along with the appraiser who's working with the owner for the HUD loan.
Yeah.
Have assumed is that the combination of the energy savings and the increases in rent that will be able to be charged due to the replacement will increase the value of the property from an income standpoint, which is primarily how the assessor is likely to assess the building and has historically versus a cost assessment, which would be, you know, more typical of a a complete new construction.
Is there a building permit required to install the boiler system? So, and I know the assessor's office track, you know, building permits. So if you apply, you know, you got two million dollars worth of improvements, quote unquote, you're probably gonna be hit a little bit um, with some, with with a with a higher value, with a higher assessed value. I can move past certain things. I mean, I was stuck on just just maintenance. And after, you know, continuing to listen, you know, I can see where it's it's more than just maintenance. I just hate when, you know, landlords don't do a lot of work, and the the property's kind of run down. They charge ridiculous rents, then they want to move everybody out and and redo everything, and really, you know, we're giving them a break because they had, they were, you know, bad landlords, kind of, sort of. And um, I've been down there. I don't know a lot about the Mansion House, but I, you know, I've been there a couple of times. I could see it needing some upgrades. Um, if you invest in fourteen million dollars in that property, and that's gonna be pretty much um, what we see on building permits, I I can, I see it a different way now, you know, past just the maintenance. And it makes me feel a little better about voting for it. Um, if it's really, if it says right now at one-point-four, that's, that's almost nothing for a building downtown. One-point-four million dollars? Is that what you said, Dave?
One, one-point-eight.
One-point-eight? That that's, that's not a lot. Um, so I I will go ahead and 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 support this, and and I'll support it in HUDs um, with listening to more conversation that went on in this meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, with that, uh, aspirationally graduating out of college was a place I wanted to live, just couldn't afford to move in at that point. Uh, at that point, I will entertain a motion if you want to read.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, it's Don. Did you want to ask Commissioner Bradley something?
No, I want to do it after the vote. I want to.
So so I wanted, so I want to remind us, everybody, that neither Mr. Sweeney or this Mr. Pratt brought this before you. This came from LCRAC. So we're looking at their redevelopment plan for this geography, which singly ends up being the project that's owned by these guys. But it is that, it's a redevelopment plan with the blighting and with the compliance with our uh, uh, adoptable, uh, relevant plans that we're looking at. LCRAC has already approved it and passed it along to us uh, with the financial considerations, just as a context and reminder. So.
Thank you. Uh, Alexa, do you want to remind us of the of the ask at this point?
Yes. So three hundred to three thirty-eight North Fourth Street redevelopment area is hereby recommended to be amended to require an active street frontage along Fourth Street. Staff recommends the proposed blighting study and redevelopment plan for the area with amendments is here. I recommend it to be declared as blighted. Staff finds the request with recommended amendments to be in conformity with the city's loop and the design downtown STL neighborhood plan. And PDA staff recommends approval of proposed blighting study and redevelopment plan as amended.
With that, I'll entertain a motion for for approval.
Can I ask one quick question? What does, what does required to be an active uh, street frontage mean exactly?
Not a black wall.
So this will force the owners to put some, or to do some physical changes, or to, does that mean lease out spaces along Fourth Street?
Lease out spaces.
Okay.
So again, I'm, I'll call for a motion.
I'm all for approval.
Second.
It was moved by Alderman Boyd, seconded by
Bradley.
Well, thank you. Call for vote.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Benton?
Aye.
Commissioner Boas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman?
Aye.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Aye.
Chair Strader?
Aye.
And the motion passes to the President voting aye.
Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll remind our commissioners that we're sending some things back to LCRA just to remind them and point out some things from the downtown plan that applies, that's been adopted. So, so it will become, as our recommendation, to be included in the redevelopment plan. And then the, the LCRA gets the permits eventually to review. So they get to be the sort of traffic cop for this.
Commissioner Bradley, I don't want to belabor the meeting, but if you could give some of us that don't understand the benefit of the steam loop for the city, can you give us a 90-second benefit on that?
Sure. The Ashley Power Plant, which is down on, on R.K. Sullivan in Biddle, was the original power plant for the 1904 World's Fair. It produced electricity, but the byproduct of steam. The steam loop ran around the central corridor downtown, has about 80 businesses on it, 10 city buildings. And today, since that plant predominantly produces steam and it produces electric as a byproduct, many of these businesses downtown do not have boilers or room to install a boiler. So therefore, they have to work off the steam loop. The steam loop today is at about one-third of its capacity. And so there's a lot of room to add on. If you're talking about sustainability, one fire does many things down there. Produces steam, produces electricity. And so it reduces the carbon footprint as far as sustainability goes of all the individual boilers around downtown. So we are always looking to add businesses to the steam loop and support that because it is not going to go away. I, by virtue of the fact that the city or SWMDC, solid waste management and development corporation owns the actual distribution loop. I am the president of that corporation. Steve Conway is the vice president and Jamie Wilson is secretary treasurer. But we have a vested interest to keep and build and use the steam loop.
And Rich, the, the, the facility itself in that wonderful gorgeous old building has been, the manufacturing of the steam has been upgraded to new state-of-the-art uses so that the fire that it uses to generate this is very efficient, is my understanding.
In fact, it was just, it's in the process of being an iteration of upgrades right now and it is state-of-the-art. So you're right on, Don.
Thank you.
And if I may just add at the end, if, I represent them. So if anybody would like to tour, it's pretty fascinating. I think everybody that does this would be interested. So I mean that if anybody would like to see it, and Rich is there a lot, but the Mason Miller that runs it's outstanding and, and his team. And if you ever want to see it, it's really neat to see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought it was important that we have at least a, a value of that, as you brought it up. With that, Alexa, you have the next one of 95-20.
Yes. So on to another area within the design downtown STL plan. What we have here is the 1801 Washington Ave redevelopment area, which is 1.13 acres located in downtown west neighborhood specifically. The developers plan to construct a new mixed-use, a six-story mixed-use building with 184 market rate units, 7,375 square feet of commercial space, and then they will also have 220 parking spaces located within the building. The prospective developer is King Realty Developers. Next slide. So here we have a rendering. So this is a, a perspective view from the southwest. And also what I didn't mention is that this building is going to be constructed on a vacant, a surface parking lot. You can't clearly see on the slide, but this is a blow-up image of the site for plan for the first floor and it's just one section. So as you can see that it says that it will have retail tenants on the ground floor, commercial space. So move to the next slide. This is just kind of to situate us as to where this is located on 1801 Washington Ave. So that is the existing surface parking lot on the right-hand side, right-hand upper corner. We have behind 1801 Washington Ave is St. Nicholas Parish, which is just north of the site. And then to the west of the site, you have another commercial retail building, which has like boutiques and other retail shops. And then also on Washington Ave, on the southern portion, you also have another office and retail building. As you can see, the current food designation is a specialty mixed-use area. Again, as we were talking about earlier, this is located in the design downtown STL plan. And I wanted to highlight some specific areas or recommendations of the design downtown neighborhood plan that are applicable to this area. So 1801 Wash Ave is located in the design downtown neighborhood plan. And also, as you can see on the right-hand side, where is the proposed active front streets map. The redevelopment area is located on Washington Ave and also 18th Street is another proposed frontage street. Additionally, the area is located in a recommended target retail activity street, specifically the garment district, which is intended to cater to fashion and design-related businesses. And so what we are recommending here is that the redevelopment plan, section B2, proposed land use of the area be amended to include disintent, disintentions and encouragements. And also, the staff recommends that the redevelopment plan includes the information about the proposed active frontage street. And also I wanted to highlight that in the plan, they have designated land uses and that this project specifically is located in the mixed-use residential. So it seems like it's existed. Next slide. So 1801, 1801 Washington Ave, the new redevelopment area is hereby recommended to be amended to require an active street frontage along 18th Street and Washington Ave and encourage the use of a commercial tenant space for fashion or design-related businesses. Staff recommends the area to be declared as blighted. Also, staff finds out the request with amendments to be conformity with the city's loop and the design downtown STL neighborhood plan. PDA staff recommends approval of the proposed lighting study and redevelopment plan with amendment. I'm happy to answer any more questions. And I believe we have Brian King of King Realty Advisors on the line and maybe an additional person that could also answer questions.
Thank you very much. With that, to continue our, our progress here, I'll go through questions for Alderman, for the, for the commissioners. And then at that point, if there's any needed or additional information, they can chime in. Alderman Boyd, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, can you, I'm going to pass and if you will come back to me.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Benton?
Couple of questions. Overall, I, I've always loved to see downtown get rid of another surface parking lot. So super excited about that. I do see here that we're asking it to be amended to require an active street frontage along 18th Street. So does that mean we're requiring them to, according to this, to the plans, it looks like there's a gap in sort of the retail square footage where there's some parking. Are we requiring that to, to be changed out here? Or that considered still meeting, meeting the intent of active frontage?
It, it does have a commercial tenant on the corner. So that, the proposal that they're looking at would comply with the request. But I did also want to add a little note that that the one thing that is in the resolution, which is not on the slide, is additional recommendations for the urban setbacks and the elimination of non-accessory parking to be included in the redevelopment plan. So those are two items that are in the resolution. We want to make sure are included. And that is to say, if this developer goes away and is unable to make it work, that if someone comes in and wants to use the same redevelopment plan, they would still need to provide, at the very least, a tenant corner that holds that corner on both sides of the frontage as well as, you know, urban setbacks and eliminating the non-accessory parking.
And Cecilia, I'm correct, in where Alexa has pulled that is from the downtown plan?
Yeah. Yep.
So it's not a customized requirement per se. It's us intervening and saying the plan we're comparing it to has some more specifics about that. And we'd like LCRA to, to include that in, in their design standards within their redevelopment plan that they'll apply to this.
Got it. And then just more of a, a general question, maybe not project-specific, but in terms of encouraging the commercial tenant space for a fashion or design-related business, you know, the news of the St. Louis Fashion Fund moving to the Grand District, is that area of downtown still targeted for fashion? And, and that type of thing, given, given that news?
That's an interesting-
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say it is. It is, it's pretty still, it still holds a significant portion of the recommendations in the neighborhood plan as well. They have a particular focus in that area. Of course, we can't require them to keep a tenant if they can't get a tenant. So that's why we're using words like encourage. We just want to make sure the developer is aware of that intent and that they make a good faith effort to try and get that filled with a tenant of that nature.
And Commissioner Benton, that's a good observation of what's things of some, one key element has moved to Grand Center, as you know.
Yeah. No further questions. Otherwise, excited to start seeing some proposals for new builds in downtown. I think that's, that's exciting.
Thank you. Commissioner Boas?
No questions.
Commissioner Bradley?
No questions. Just the same comment as before, right on Washington Avenue, right along the steam line. I would respectfully ask, please take a look at that for sustainability, for a hybrid system, for full heating, hot water, whatever you can do. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
You, Commissioner Long?
Yeah, no, just want to echo thrilled to be getting rid of a surface parking lot in downtown and thrilled to see new build downtown. The last thing I will add, and I, I meant to ask us about the last project, but we can move on. So I'll ask, ask about this one. Does this have an official letter from Alder Roman Davis, a letter of support or anything that we know of?
I do not see one. I was going to ask about that myself.
We have the-
Not that I know.
Yeah. We, we as the planning commission, don't ask for that. Dale, for going to the LCRA, have you gotten a letter of support from Alder Roman Davis?
Thank you. Yes. Well, we, we have traditionally asked for a letter of support, but we're less inclined to do that now, now that we're doing the, the financial analysis on each project. And it's clear if the Alderman introduces a piece of legislation that they're in favor of it. Actually, in this case, Alderman Davis was the one that initiated contact on this project. So she's very enthusiastic about it. But we're not necessarily asking for a letter from the Alderman upfront, though we certainly are talking with the Alderman. And, and we wouldn't do a project if we know it couldn't get supported by an Alderman.
And we're obligated to look at it as soon as LC, upon LCRA sending it to us.
Yeah, I, and I appreciate that. I know Aldermen are involved. It, it just, when it comes with the packet, and sometimes we don't, when it gets to our meeting here, we don't know the level at which that they have been involved. And so to see it in black and white, attached to the packet, to the agenda item, if it's there, that's great. It tells us if it's not, we're left to sort of just wonder what their feelings are. And I'm, I'm happy to know that they, that they love this. I love it. So that answers my question.
And, and it's partly in, in adding the fact that on the planning commission, we require certain levels of expertise to be a member and different range of expertise, is to just get folks to, to freely comment and review from what their expertise is. And just knowing about the Alderman and the context to that. So, good point.
I'll just add that all the items on your agenda tonight have already, the, the Alder people have already given their nod for introduction this Friday at the Board of Aldermen. So there's no question about their support of each project.
And Dale, you are asking us-
Night then, huh?
Go, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I couldn't do the question.
I, I was just saying, if, if they want this on the, on the Board of Aldermen on Friday, no pressure on us, right?
Exactly.
Well, that's just the introduction of the bill. I mean, it's not, you know, it has to go through committee and all yet.
So Dale, we do have one that's coming from you that will be a little bit of a pressure situation for the, for, for February, correct?
That is correct. Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Long. With that, Commissioner Peoples?
No questions.
Commissioner Goodman?
No question.
Commissioner Ryan, I think, had to leave us. Okay. Commissioner Boyd, you wanted me to come back to you?
Yeah, thank you. I, I might have missed this, but, so it's going to be 184 market rate units. Talk about the, what, what happened with the parking? Is there going to be underground parking or something? I'm sure I missed it. You got to have parking somewhere.
The park is going to be located within the building. I would say go back a couple of slides, but it's not the best depiction of
Okay.
where the parking is located.
Okay.
Alderman Boyd?
Or we also have Brian King here, so he can answer that question.
Sure. Let, let Brian answer. Thank you.
Because I will make a point, Alderman, in, in, it's, it's a controversial thing, but in our downtown zoning, we don't require parking. It's sort of back from the old days.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, despite that, we're planning 237 parking spaces. There's two decks of parking sort of hidden, both subterranean and behind the retail component that gets us to about a 1.2 ratio, which is required by most lenders for a project this size.
Wow. You know, I'm, I'm used to hearing less parking spaces than units, which I always found to be real interesting. So yours seem to be a little more parking spaces than units. So I look forward to having more conversation in HUDs, Brian.
Same. Thank you.
All right.
With that, all questions have been asked. If you would review the ask of the, of the staff.
All right. So we have that the 1801 Washington Ave redevelopment area is hereby recommended to be amended to require an active street frontage along 18th Street and Washington Ave and encourage the use of a commercial tenant space for fashion or design-related businesses. Staff recommended the area to be declared as blighted. Staff finds that the request with amendments to be in conformity with the city's loop and the design downtown STL neighborhood plan. PDA staff recommends approval of proposed lighting study and redevelopment plan with the amendments.
With that, I will-
May I interject with just one quick more question about the, the steam, steam line? Is it, I mean, it seems to, to go along with supporting the city and meeting sustainability goals that the city has and things like that. Is it even legally possible if we wanted to say projects that happen to be along the steam loop, that it would be required that they tie into the system to get tax abatement or to pass a redevelopment plan?
There's actually- As far as some of that is concerned, it was presented by Alderman Coder. I don't have all the details of it with me today, but I believe that it covers all those scenarios.
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of that. Did you say there's pending legislation on that?
It's a consideration. I don't believe that it is a requirement. I think there was a big concern about requirements, but, you know, when people give it an opportunity, most of the time, people would dismiss it. They give it an opportunity and they look at it. Usually, it is financially lucrative for them to utilize the steam line for a number of reasons, which we don't have time to discuss for tonight. But yes, there is legislation that is out there from Alderman Coder, which handles that.
And I think SLDC staff, Otis and maybe Dale and others have been involved in starting, wanting to restore interest in the steam loop. And it's just a good point taken for LCRA and all of us to be thinking about how we can, if not require it, really sell it.
Okay. Let's, I'm, call for a, a motion.
Move to approve. Benton?
Thank you, Commissioner Long. I think Commissioner Long.
It's been moved by Commissioner Banton, seconded by Commissioner Long. Call for both, please. Object, we have missed, we have lost a commissioner. Call for both.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradlin.
Aye.
Commissioner Long.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Aye.
Chair Strasser.
Aye.
And the motion passes without President Biden.
Thank you. The next item is the last one by Lex at this point, 9720 R D M.
Yep, last one for me before I pass it on to Roman and Cecilia. So the next large redevelopment area is located in the Villa Van de Vender neighborhood and comprises of 156.05 acres. The project will include various developers, one of them identified as Florida Lee Corporation will be the master planner and plans to construct new single family homes. If you will recall the last planning commission, this might seem a little familiar because there was, the area is just north of this current area was approved last month. We can go to the next slide. As you can see, the current sloop map has multiple sloop designation, or the area has multiple designation. Okay. So the developer has provided the following information in table. So this table kind of lists the vacant lots and improved parcels that they plan to do development on. Something that's pretty important is that the villa is a well established and well established African American community described as both sufficiently sophisticated and sustainable. And also in the villa, the villa is located and situated on three major business corridors, which is the Newstead Business, the Martha Luther King Drive Business District, and the Great Rivers Green Wing. And against Florida Lee Development Corporation aims to renovate the existing distressed properties in that area into new single family residences in the villa neighborhood. Next slide. So what you see here is that Pinnacle Contracting is going to be working with Florida Lee as their strategic construction manager. And the image of these row houses are the example of the type of development that Florida Lee plans to do in this area. And something to note is that they're going to make sure that they go through the historic preservation considerations with the modern architectural design. And P D A staff recommends the areas to be declared blighted. Staff finds the proposed lighting study and redevelopment plan is in conformity with the sloop and the sloop, the multiple designation that are on this slide. And P D A staff recommends approval of proposed lighting study and redevelopment plan. Happy to answer any further questions about this area. And also, I believe Laura Hughes and Alderwoman Evans are on the line.
Thank you very much. Prior to going to the commissioners, of course, I will give Alderman Hughes, Evans, and Alderwoman Evans a chance to speak. So she's here before we go to questions of the commissioners. So Alderwoman Evans? You're muted? Which I normally say good for politicians and preachers.
Okay, yes. Well, this development is well deserved. For years, we've not had development in our war, which is the fourth war. And we welcome Florida Lee Development Corporation to bring about this development. She's also here. If you need any further plans or explanation, she can give that to you. But I am very excited to see part of Alderman Sam Moore's vision being continued, as well as my vision continuing. So that's what we want, safe communities that our constituents can live in.
Thank you very much. We'll start with questions. Alderman Boyd.
Yes, I don't have any questions, but I like to suggest to Ms. Laura Hughes that the 22nd one is open for business. And if you know many developers that want to come over and claim blocks, have them call me. I'm not hard to get ahold of. Jeffreyboy.com, 314-622-3287.
Jeffrey, find your own.
Didn't take her, I wasn't trying to take her. I said, if you know someone, we're open for business. We, I need all referrals I can get.
Thank you. Commissioner Banton.
See you after this.
Just a couple of quick ones. Is there a current neighborhood plan for this area?
Actually, I'm glad you mentioned that. And if I looked my master planner, I think she dropped off the line. Just a bit of background, the reason you saw me twice is because Alderman Moore divided the area into various regions because of Alderman's Moore's untimely death. I had to wait a bit to move forward with Plan C, and we're just catching up. And so ultimately, there will be a master development plan in place that captures everything from Lexington to Page. And it envisions using the existing improved parcels, again, as I spoke last time. I plan to renovate those particular properties and then come back with new development that closely matches the aesthetics and the historical ordinance that's in place for the area. More so, the master development plan will go out to R F P, such that I can attract all of the commercial and the retail shops that I need to support the taxes. And hence, at some point, there will be a special business district tax that helps support the infrastructure. The reason why this one was exciting to me was I had to move forward and actually identify my strategic consulting manager. And so now I actually have at least one builder that is committed to coming back and looking at a lot of the different parcels, downsizing that a bit because of the lot size. But again, keep it in mind, the aesthetic value that we need to have in place because of the historic significance in the area. So I was really excited when Pinnacle came forward. We've been meeting for a while and suggested what they're currently doing in other areas here for Area G. So the short answer is yes, there's a master development plan underway.
But is there a official adopted city neighborhood plan?
Let me, let me comment to that. So in earlier times, we did planning activity in the, in the Villa neighborhood with, prior Alderman people. As was mentioned, Alderman and Moore synthesized that into these geographies. So these redevelopment plans are going to those specific geographies. There's going to be a flavor of what goes in there, determined a little bit historically from the previous planning efforts, the historic districts and the zoning. And so the master development plan is, is going to be a next level that will help with strategy and timing. But it's overall, the Villa neighborhood will be in the cycle for our new rebirth of planning efforts. But it's not, there's not a new one going on right now.
Got it, got it. Thank you. And then last question, same question that I asked previously. Is there any replating or combining of lots as part of this that you foresee as part of this development?
Not as I foresee now, because majority of what I have captured are L R A parcels. As I spoke last time, my main focus right now is rehab. I need to address the population problem. And so as I'm starting with the rehab, the new construction will follow.
All right, thank you. No further questions.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Boas.
No further questions.
Commissioner Bradley.
No questions. Great project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Long.
No additional questions. Laura, it's great to have you back. Thank you. And Alderwoman Evans, always a pleasure to have you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
With you. Thank you.
Commissioner Peoples.
No questions.
Commissioner Goodman.
No question.
Thank you. And Commissioner Biden is out, and I have no questions again, once again. Alderwoman Evans, always good to see you. Laura, thank you for being actively engaged in the city and doing what you're doing with that. We'll entertain a motion for the approval. Oh, I'm sorry. Alexa, your last opportunity here to tell us what you're asking from us.
All right, so P D A staff recommends the areas to be declared blighted. Staff finds the proposed lighting study and redevelopment plan is in conformity with the sloop and the designation that are up there. We're on the slide. P D A staff recommends approval of proposed lighting study and redevelopment plan.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain the motion.
No move. Commissioner Long.
Second.
I will move from Commissioner Long, a second by Commissioner Banton. Call for both.
Previous role, please.
Call for previous role. Hearing any objections? Hearing no objections, approved by previous role. Thank you very much, ladies. Again, Happy New Year to you on that.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
I saw you on a Zoom pretty early this morning, so you have a busy day for a part-time job.
I have been zooming since I got up today. You know, it's, it's been a long day of Zoom. You just have to, you have to just zoom right on with it, yes.
I beg your pardon, Don. This is not a part-time job, unless you're in certain areas of the city. You have to watch your geography, sir.
Nice to Don.
I've been waiting on Roman to come. Thank you, Jeffrey.
It's not going to make him stop talking, so. You're welcome, Don.
Roman, please take over quickly.
Very good, very good, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is a Chapter 99 Blighting Study and Redevelopment Plan for the 2000 to 2020 North Broadway and 2001 North Second Street redevelopment area. You may remember that the Planning Commission reviewed this site for a strategic land use plan amendment, as well as a rezoning at last month's Planning Commission meetings. I'll be brief with the presentation, given the fact you're familiar with the site. It's about one and two-thirds of an acre in size. It consists of three parcels, encompasses an entire city block in the near north riverfront neighborhood, several blocks north of downtown. The existing uses are a warehouse building, which is mostly vacant at this time, as well as a vacant lot. The redevelopment plan is proposing a development of a $34 million mixed use development project, which would include about 146 apartments, 11,000 square feet of commercial space, and 114 surface parking spaces. The prospective developer is Blackline Real Estate, which owns the three parcels. Mr. Michael Schwartz of Blackline is here tonight and will be available for questions. This is an aerial photo of the site. As you can see, it does in fact take up the entire block and is surrounded by primarily large industrial and warehouse buildings. These are a couple of photos of the existing building. As you can see, it's a large building, four, four and five stories in places, 150,000 square feet in size. It's also an attractive building. It was recently added to the National Register of Historic Places. But it does need a fair amount of work, and that $34 million proposed cost is a test too. This is a rendering of the completed development project that was submitted by the prospective developer. The city's strategic land use plan designates redevelopment area as a specially mixed use area, which encourages a mix of land uses. So the redevelopment plan is in conformity with the city's strategic land use plan. It's also in conformity with the North Riverfront Commerce Corridor Land Use Plan. This is a topical plan that was adopted by the Planning Commission back in 2013 for a large industrial district. For this sub area of this particular plan, the recommendation was calling for upper floor residential uses. So it is in conformity both with the sloop as well as the topical plan. The redevelopment plan is not proposing the use of eminent domain. It does provide for up to 20 years of tax abatement at the terms that are listed on the slide. And staff is recommending approval of the lighting study and redevelopment plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Michael Schwartz of Blackline is also available.
Very good. Thank you, Roman. Let's start off simply with the questions from the commissioner and Mr. Schwartz. You can then, if appropriate, answer those and respond. Commissioner Alderman Boyd.
No questions. Sounds like a phenomenal project. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Banton.
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Boas.
No questions.
Commissioner Bradley.
No questions. Great project. Thank you.
Commissioner Long.
I had no questions. Loved it the last time I was here, and I feel the exact same way.
Commissioner Peoples.
No questions. Great project.
Commissioner Goodman.
No question.
Well, Mr. Schwartz, any statements you want to make?
I've been on, I've been on here since 5:30, so I was, I was all ready for Alderman Boyd to just, you know, start asking. Just for everybody's knowledge, because I know that most of you were on last time. M H D C, as I had mentioned last time, we were applying for state and federal historic li tech credits. The awards were announced. Unfortunately, we did not receive an allocation. The state 4% credit is competitive. And for some reason, probably political, who knows? Not a single project that was also utilizing historic tax credits got an allocation of state li techs this year. Fortunately, in the COVID relief package that was signed into law at the end of last year, it actually established a 4% cap, 4% floor for the federal 4% credit. So with, that actually added quite a bit, made up quite a bit of the equity that we lost with the state 4% li tech. And so between that, and then we've made the change from 85% of the units being li tech to 100% in order to make up that, that needed equity difference. We are reapplying for 4% federal only li techs, which is not a competitive process. So we are confident that that will, that allocation will be secured. And we will be able to start construction as soon as we receive a state and federal historic tax credit allocation, which we anticipate to be later this summer. So thank you all for your support and really looking forward to bringing this to fruition.
Michael, that sounds like a good news COVID story.
You know, I, yeah. Any, I'm not giving any credit to President Trump for signing it into law, but he did. So finally.
And it's coming to a city in the heartland and historic project. That's a pretty damn good news.
It's been something that Congress has been fighting a long time to pass, and it was appropriate and finally did so.
Cool.
Thank you, thank you. With that, Roman's given us the recommendation. I will accept the motion.
I move for approval.
Second, Banton.
Previous role.
It's been moved by Alderman Boyd, seconded by Commissioner Banton. Called for previous role. Hearing any objections? Hearing no objections is approved by previous role. Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. We have one more item on the agenda, which our friend from home is doing this one. Cecilia.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Cecilia is in quarantine, by the way, folks.
Yeah. So don't come by for a few more days. We have one last item for you guys. The, it is a large area redevelopment plan for the Riverview Boulevard West Forest and Avenue, Lilian Avenue, Alcott Avenue redevelopment area. It is approximately 260 acres in the Walnut Park East neighborhood. There's about 1,400 parcels across 40 city blocks. And there's a myriad of uses, residential, business, institutional, both occupied and unoccupied. We've seen this quite a bit, um, you know, throughout the year. They are intended to be sort of, um, a, a hopeful, um, redevelopment plan to attract developers to this area. Um, so at the moment, there are no redevelopers, um, who are anticipated, um, to take ownership of this, add with some of the other ones that we've heard tonight. Um, but it does allow for tax abatement of up to, uh, twenty-five years, that's broken down by ten, um, and then fifteen. Go to the next slide. Uh, this is the strategic land use plan. As you can see, there's, there's quite a bit of, um, stuff going on here. Um, and the redevelopment plan itself, um, does allow for quite a bit of flexibility, allows for, um, a mix of uses. So there, it's not super prescriptive in the redevelopment plan itself. Uh, staff has reviewed the blighting study and redevelopment plan, um, against the strategic land use plan and found it to be in conformity, given the high level of flexibility that's granted, uh, within the redevelopment plan itself to facilitate various uses throughout the area. Um, staff does find that it meets the definition of light, um, per the blighting report and recommends approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Cecilia. With that, uh, we'll start with Alderman Boyd.
Nope. I'm sorry, no questions.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Banton.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Boas. Commissioner Boyes.
She had a text, uh, just told me she's otherwise occupied for, for a moment.
No, I'm so sorry, I was actually trying to multi- to manage multiple screens, which I apparently can't do. I apologize.
But, Tracy, would you take an opportunity to talk about the Green City Coalition?
Yes, this is a, as with Alderman Boyd's, um, well, uh, Wells Goodfellow, this is another neighborhood that is close to my heart. We've worked with the Green City Coalition, which includes the MSD, Department of Conservation, City of St. Louis, and SLDC, a lot in this neighborhood. And I'm very excited to see this in place, because this is kind of the next step after we've done some of the, um, it's, it's a combination of some of the demolitions and also trying to re-green. Um, it's really good to see the opportunity for redevelopment. And, and really, I think this, this is needed to push that along. So glad to see it. And no questions.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Bradley.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Long.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Peoples.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Goodman.
No question.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion of the recommendation. Uh, and would you just recover your, uh, review your recommendations, Cecilia?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so staff has reviewed the blighting study and redevelopment plan against the strategic land use plan and found it to be in compliance. Um, they, we recommend, um, approval per the blighting report, um, of the definition of light and recommend approval of the blighting study and redevelopment plan.
Thank you very much, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval.
Second, Banton.
It's been moved by.
Previous role.
Commissioner Boyd, seconded by Commissioner Banton. Call for vote, call for previous role, hearing no objections. Approved with previous role, thank you very much. Uh, with that, uh, prior to Don, and thank you for, I think that covers all of our items today. Don, Cecilia, I want to, to kind of piggyback on something Commissioner Long said a little earlier to consider. For transparency, for, to avoid any conflict of interest. I noticed on some of them, at the very beginning, we have who the developer is. We don't list always who the Alderman person is, even if they do or do not support it, uh, on our packets. So I would ask that we consider start at least listing them. And if they're, who the key players are. If, you know, having the name of a company is good. But in my mind, I'm thinking if there's a key person or player to avoid any, any conflicts that any of us may have, would be good to know upfront prior to them showing up to the commission. Uh, just as a point of record.
Interesting to, to take that in, in the context of, of understanding, wanting to have a heads-up about potential conflicts of interest.
Yes.
Get that.
I just simply want to put that on the table, uh, with that. At this point, I'll entertain any open conversations from commissioners. Hearing none of that, uh, we have.
I'll say one more thing, ta-da. Uh, it's potentially that our two next agendas will be light. Uh, and with hearing from Tracy, uh, and Commissioner Long, we might take that opportunity to, uh, uh, do some training, uh, at Planning Commission time, so.
Okay. I have no objections, I don't think any commissioners would at that point. Uh, we are pressing just at literally two hours. I thank everyone, I first again, uh, welcome Alexa back to the baptism by fire this afternoon. Uh, we are watching in and hoping for the best for Cecilia and those that are, are finding themselves in quarantine. Uh, Don, you, we hope your staff as well, Happy New Year to all, uh, being in prayer with whatever supreme being for our country, because as we know right now, it has gone completely haywire. Out of good news, it happens out of, out of Georgia, then we turn around and have this crazy news out of DC.
Thank you Reverend.
Pardon me?
Thank you Reverend.
Yeah, well, it's in, it's in, it is in my blood, you're right. So with that, I wish everybody a Happy New Year, uh, thank you, and we will see you on February at this point.
All right, good night, everybody.